We have three names that have been submitted for the public forum. We'll begin with Skylar. Skylar Siler? Is she here? Not here. Okay. Sidney Rathburn? Also not present. And Karen Schley? Schley? Karen? Karen, you have, um, I'm sorry. Can you have up to five minutes to address the board? If you're not here due to lack of time, we'll have you back at the next available board meeting. Personal attacks are not permitted. And the board may respond or clarify to you. However, understand that some things may need some additional concern. And if you actually want a response, we'd ask you to submit an email or response to the superintendent. We'll respond to you in that way. Okay? Yep, go ahead and Ryan will be the time to speak.
And I'll wave at you when you're getting a little bit of time so you, in case you get close to fight.
Okay, thank you. My name is Karen Schley. I'm normally a very private person. I don't have signs in my yard or bumper stickers on my car. I value autonomy. I don't like when others push their thoughts on me. So I try very hard not to push my thoughts on the others.
It's just not coming through the application.
So speaking here today is very uncomfortable for me. I'm doing this out of necessity, not out of want. As the parent of a transgender child in this school district, I have firsthand experience of the effects the presentation from the last school board meeting has had on our youth. I understand you have no control over the content of the presentation. So I will not address all of the offensive, dehumanizing, and inaccurate material shown. My child is smart enough to have seen through that. He has already learned how to deflect this kind of directed hate on a daily basis in and out of school. The true damage was having his leaders invite offensive, dehumanizing, and inaccurate garbage to be spewed in his own school. His supposed safe space. By inviting the Child Protection League, you have opened the door for hate. Pretty strong words. I will explain. You have now shown the entire school district another side to human rights. Meaning, you don't have to respect other human beings for who they are. It's okay to not like people with blue eyes. You don't have to acknowledge people with brown hair. It's optional to see this eight-and-a-half shoe-sized person as human at all. Ridiculous, right? That's because there is no other side to being human. Being transgender is the same thing. Knowing your gender is just as much an innate part of a person as the color of your eyes or your hair or the size of your feet. So for you, for these students, school board, to have invited, invited any group, I don't care how child-friendly the name sounds, to espouse another side to their humanity is unimaginable. Being a kid is hard enough without adults opening more doors for ostracism and hate. Whether this was your intent or not, this was the consequence of inviting the Child Protection League, a known hate group. It's as if the N W O C P presented on racial equality and then the KKK was invited. You have done irreparable damage to all students in this school district and made all our schools less safe by allowing the suggestion there is another side to human rights. So here I am uncomfortably feeling obligated to speak in front of you, but not for you. I speak now to my beautiful, smart, funny, outgoing, devastatingly handsome son. To hope to close that door of hate even just a little bit by showing him he is worth fighting for. He is worth being uncomfortable for. He has value, deserves respect and acknowledgement. Not because he's transgender, but because he is human. Just as all our students deserve respect, acknowledgement, and to be valued. My hope is you will acknowledge your mistake of allowing another side to humanity. For the only other side is inhumane. And I would hope none of you would intentionally wish to bring inhumanity to Becker School District. I would like to think we could use this as a teachable moment for you, the school board, to learn from your mistake. I would like to be able to tell my son, see, even adults make mistakes, but we own up to them. Will you? Thank you.
Uh, thank you. That ends the public forum. Uh, my understanding, the student report is not here, so they haven't provided any written report. We'll move on to a superintendent's report.
All right. Uh, so last Thursday, we had staff development. Um, that was the start of what most people took for spring break, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And today was off for students. But we added that Thursday in there and do the number of absences. And able to have some wellness presentations. Melissa Pribble from Bones Back was able to provide some speaking and work with each of our buildings. I also did some work with science curriculum all day with Minda, some professional training. There was some prep time offered and much more. And so I received a number of pieces of feedback from teachers at least that just thanked us for the opportunity to do that. And the wellness activities were very well welcomed by most staff, or at least the ones that responded to me. MC testing is still taking place. I shared that last month, but it's still taking place in our schools. We'll continue through the middle of May. Continue to look at staffing for next school year. Excited for the number of grants that we've had that will allow us to keep and continue to keep staff and bring staff back that have been cut in recent years. We're also excited for a number of summer grants, allowing for additional staff development, summer academy opportunities, and more. So we'll have a summer school taking place this summer. We have two weeks in June and two weeks in August, and that's fully funded through grants. We were just approved last week on those. And so we'll help. We have a number of staff development grants that we were able to get just all through the COVID money, as I would call it, some of the ESSR funds and things like that through the state and federal government. So we're going to hopefully get a lot of participants in summer grants and staff development. Letters training is one of those that a number of staff are taking advantage of as well. The referendum, we had a P O C meeting, Project Oversight Committee meeting, last week. And so some of the updates from that, the transportation building is, they're designing coordination meetings that are occurring weekly. We've met with Becker City, and then they're going to meet with, I've met with Becker Township, our ICS has, on March 30th and tonight. I've completed drawings and are working into construction design. And so they're working on just getting, we started a couple of months ago on some of the outside walls and things like that, and they're working on getting some of the interior things done and more fine-tuned and things like that so they can get better bids and things.
And the transportation building we have in the consent agenda, right? That doesn't have to go out for bid because it's sourced through the co-op?
Yeah, so the transportation building, we were able to get through a cooperative purchasing agreement. And so the bidding process takes place with them. And so they're able to, we're able to send that to the board without getting bids on a project that large because the co-op has already done the bidding process for us. And so we got a pretty good deal on that according to what some of the rates are going right now. And there's a, I don't remember, what was the delay time? Nine months or 10 months or something like that?
Eight, 10 months except for material.
Yeah, so we want to get it ordered and then hopefully get some of the things in place so they can put it up as soon as it gets here and is completed. Middle and high school projects continuing with the design development phase and doing some verifications, inspections, doing some of the soil boring and things like that. They've had multiple user group meetings. I think they'll have another one next week or maybe later this week. And they have one on March 24th. Primary school, doing the design group meetings as well, working towards wrapping up some of the design development drawings and continuing with user group meetings for this week as well.
When you say primary school, you're also, that's early childhood.
Early education center is included in with primary school, yeah. Um, I should add that in just to make sure people learn. The intermediate school, design coordination meetings are continuing as well. Again, doing some of those design development drawings, more fine tuning of the things. Mechanical and electrical is performing existing condition validation. So they're just testing the current equipment and how they have to change things when we expand and add things on and make some adjustments there because that's the oldest mechanical and electrical stuff we have in the district. And then again, user groups meetings will take place this week. And then the multipurpose field, continuing design development phase, working on site layout with existing conditions. We talked a little bit about that as well. That is the only group that hasn't met is the outside things with the lights, the baseball field, softball field, and then the multipurpose field. But we just touched on that at the Project Oversight Committee.
I guess I just want to ask, do we know when we'll start seeing any of this?
So based on what ICS and stuff said was is we're basically ground prep this year, this fall, and hopefully get the building up early January. So then at that point, once the walls get up, which I don't honestly know because I'm not in trades, how long that, how long that takes. But if, when the walls come up, it'll then be a point where they can start working inside because the transportation, as we all know, where the early childhood is going, we got to have the transportation, at least the infrastructure done before we can start working on the ECFE part. So you won't, there's going to be work out there, but it's going to be a lot of dirt work, groundwork, putting the foundation and footings in so that when the materials do come, that it can get constructed even during winter. And then the only other thing I will add from a numbers standpoint, the numbers that ICS has given us is we are, given where we're at in the project, we are still on task, on budget, and no, knock on wood, no hiccups, at least at this point in the phase of the project.
Anything to add?
No, I, no. The thing is, I think we're all excited to see, to see things start, but that's probably going to be the first thing that we notice is the dirt work being moved out there, but.
Outside of town.
Outside of town, yeah.
So like work on the field and all that kind of stuff?
No, and field won't even start until probably next spring because we need to use it for this coming football season, so.
Legislative update, I shared some of those last month as well. There's a number of policy committee hearings. Those will continue to decrease. The budget bills are due on Friday, April 8th. There's some omnibus bills that are being discussed in the House and the Senate. Some funding here and there. I don't know if the Senate has a lot of funding, but the governor has some funding as well for schools. Deadlines included, committees must act favorably on policy bills to meet the first deadline in the other body, which is the other, it's also the Senate, the opposite side. April 8th, committees must act favorably on major appropriation and finance bills. So there'll be a lot of interesting information that will come following that deadline. And then the Passover Easter spring break for the capitals, April 11th to the 18th. And then they have to come to some type of agreement by May 23rd. So just wanted to kind of keep those in mind if anyone reaches out to our legislators. You know, we've got some stuff a couple of months ago that we shared to talk to them about. Special cross subsidy is a big one that we're hoping can get, reach both sides of the aisle because it's something that affects multiple schools all over. And MSB has been tweeting out, I don't know if any of you follow MSB on Twitter, but tweeting out how special cross subsidy is impacting schools. And I think I shared in the February meeting that it's essentially equal to our local tax levy that we passed here, so. There's some back and forth on that, so.
I wish we would just call it shortfall, how much they're not funding. When we say cross subsidy, that's how much the state says not funding. Which is equal to our levy, which is a purpose.
Pretty close to our levy, yeah. State or federal government. Uh, graduation rate, so the graduation rates released last Wednesday, I think, last week. Graduation rate for 2021 was at 92.9%, which is slightly down from our recent high, our seven-year high of 95.5% in 2020. It does beat the statewide average for 2021, which is 83.3%. And was, which was also down from 83.8% in 2020.
So, um, because I know you're going to go to Minda, so I'm just going to turn right to Minda. Do we know outside of COVID, are there attributes to the reduction in grad rates comparatively over other years?
So we have to remember 2020 had that caveat of different rules. So there was some allowances that they let go in 2020. So then 2021 kind of had a dip making up for some of that. So we have some kind of comp.
So these, so since we don't have 19 or 18, how does 21 compare to say 19 or 18?
19 was 94%, 18 was 95.4%, 17 was 91.6%.
Okay.
It's right in there. We also have to understand these are four-year graduation rates. And it's really hard for a school to get 100% graduation rate because there are some students who do not graduate, even if they're on the best plan that we have for them until they're 21 years old. And so that's part of their plan as well. So that's why we've released, there's four-year graduation rates, there's five-year, six-year, and seven-year graduation rate.
I was just curious if there are.
So you're never going to ever see all schools get 100% four-year graduation rate.
And I wasn't expecting 100, but three points seems like a lot. So just wanted to try and understand.
Yeah.
It's easy to sit here and talk about percentages, guys, but you're talking what? 17, 18 students that aren't graduating?
And again, some of those are on a plan to be here in school until they're 21. And so, so some of those 17, it is 17, it's the right number.
Well, and again, I guess I assume because that's the requirement, we have to have a plan for them up until age 21, correct?
We try to unless there are dropouts. Yeah, and I don't know how many of those are after that, but maybe into this. But we have, we do have plans in place for kids who are behind credit. And we do a wonderful job in the summertime with our catch-up, our credit recovery and things too.
Any other questions?
Um, then the communication plan, I've just attached the draft of the school communication plan. Some we worked on, Minda, myself, yeah, Minda, myself, community ed, our executive team worked on. I'd like to share with the board, any community members as well who want to see that and get some feedback. We're sharing it with cabinet members during our cabinet meeting in a couple of weeks and giving some feedback on that. And then I'll bring it to the board next month and look for approval on that. So there's a number of things that go into play in that. One of those is what's communicated and when, how often, and who's doing that communication. And then the other piece of it is some of the branding and things like that that we need to fine tune. I think there was some of that at some place a few years ago. But we want to make sure that when we have our bulldog emblems, we have our colors and things like that, shirts and different pieces of clothing and things like that are created, or posters, or, you know, you see the bulldogs around the hallways, those types of things. Want to make sure those are uniformed to, just to make sure they align with each other and things. And so that's in the communication plan as well. So you can take a look at that and let me know if there's anything feedback-wise. Again, the community can look at that. And I'm hoping the feedback on any of that. We took a number of different plans and things in place. And then again, a lot of feedback and things from our exec team. And they're still looking at it too, and community ed and Minda and myself.
All right. You and I talked about, expected in your superintendent's report, because last, our last regular board meeting, we had a discussion about communication to board members. And that there was some indication that board members, or somebody had said to not communicate to board members. Did you?
I didn't receive any follow-up on that at all. I think it was a miscommunication if anything. And yeah, anyone can communicate to board members, anyone can communicate to me. I, you know, I did share, if it goes to me and the board members, I do get seven copies of that. So if they have something that I can take care of, then I would love to take care of that. But certainly people can communicate to the board. People, there's a lot of people here that can hear this right now, communicate to the board. But I didn't, I think you had asked for proof of that. I didn't receive any further, anything on that, I guess.
And I'll just say it again for everybody too. If you have any information that somebody has told you not to communicate to a board member, please provide that and we'll correct that situation. Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right, hearing none. The next item is item three, resignation. So two board members have resigned, Cindy Graham and Sarah Schaefer, and they're not present. And this is the official declaration that those seats are vacant at this meeting. Okay? And with that, we move then to agenda item number four, which is the process to appoint member, people to those vacant seats. And you can see the printed process in here. The only addition that I think we had talked about was to have them, any candidates that are interested would email those question responses to
To me.
jsschmidt@IST726.org, so to the superintendent.
So if anyone, anyone does it, then they can fill out those four questions. If you guys are in tune to this, unless you want to make other changes to this. But this is what we followed, 2014 maybe, when there was a vacancy on the board at that time as well. Changed dates and that's about it. And then updated some of the things that changed with the statutes that changed since then. But yeah, if anyone would like to apply, they can fill out those four questions, send me those answers, and then I'll share those with the board at the next meeting.
So entertain a motion to establish this process.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion entertain.
And a second? Okay, moved and seconded, open discussion?
I just, I just want to clarify, if you go through this, everybody that wants to apply needs to apply. And then the school board will choose a candidate and make jackets. And then their term will begin June 1st or June 2nd, whatever.
30 days after.
Yeah, June 1st, yeah.
And it will, it will run through, generally runs through December 31st. Elections take place in November, but the board comes through generally, correct?
Actually.
Actually, the change, the change to that and the part is that once the election is certified and those people are elected, it would take their seat at that point. And so this, this filling of the term that we would fill would be from basically June, the beginning of June until the board certifies the election results.
And the appeal, there's an appeal going after that as well. And so once that hits, yeah.
So is it statute that we have to wait 30 days?
That's correct.
For this one, yeah.
That's correct. It is in statute, all these requirements that are in here are statutory requirements. And again, that's to allow people to appeal or make a case that somebody should not have appointed. If you wanted to appoint my wife, which she won't apply because, you know, you get the, you get the point, right? To appeal it, okay?
And there'll be different, in November, there will be different positions to run for. So there are three, four-year positions and there'll be two, two-year positions, yeah.
And when you submit, so when you submit your paperwork to Angel, do you have to designate which one you're going to go after?
That'll be clear in the election process.
The only reason I ask is some people have come and asked me questions. So if we knew that answer already, then, then I could.
So there'll be separate, so if you remember, on the ballot, you get, there'll be a position for your position, and it'll be vote for three.
Right.
And then there'll be a two-year position, vote for two.
Right, and you have to say if you're going for the four-year or the two-year.
Which, which one you want your name on the ballot for. And you can't be on both.
Gotcha.
Because you can only be on the ballot once. That's my election judge training coming up. All right, is that clear? Other questions on the process? Any changes proposed? Okay, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number five is the consent agenda.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda.
Been moved? And seconded for consent agenda? Any other, any items for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six is a gifts, receipt of gifts. Moved by Connaughton.
Oh, that, yes.
Seconded by Aaron. Any discussion?
Again, a lot, a huge thank you to, let's see, was it three, six, nine, 11? 11 organizations and individuals that contribute again to our, to our programs. And a lot of stuff wouldn't be able to get done without those donations. So again, thank you.
Forgive my ignorance, what is NWTA?
Talent Academy, that's a gifted and talented.
Gifted and talented program.
The one myself.
Oh, they were, they were here. I'm sorry, Minda. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're up to item seven, which is second readings of policies. And to my knowledge, we didn't receive any comments or changes.
I didn't receive anything, no.
Is there any of these that board members want some more time to consider?
I would like to pull 206 and 722 off, at least.
206 and 722?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the public participating in school board meetings?
And the data.
And the public data request.
Yes.
Okay, any other items on that? So take a motion to adopt policies listed with the exception of 206 and 722.
So moved.
And seconded, in discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And so I'll take, 206 and 722 are laid on the table for additional comments that will be due before the next regular board meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, agenda item number eight is strategic planning.
Yep, so for this year, setting goals, we haven't done any of that up to this point because we wanted to wait for MSPA. I've been working with MSPA to do some strategic planning, some long-range, five-year strategic planning. And they've got some penciled-in dates that they'd like to put us on for this. And the strategic planning will involve a pretty extensive process and a number of meetings, but we get, get a speed. but, um, we get, get, uh, feedback both internally and externally. And we also get feedback through surveys, in-person meetings, um, the school board and our, um, cabinet and executive committees as well, um, provide some feedback. These are the dates that they have available, um, in times, rough, rough idea of the times. Um, just looking for any issues with the board members, if they have any conflicts or anything like that. Uh, one of the questions I did ask, uh, M S B A was the process because we are short two board members. Uh, and so if we identify who those board members are before Thursday, May 5th, or whatever date the first listening sessions are, or the surveys go out, they can participate as a community member at that point, so they will be a district resident, and then just seamlessly, uh, slide out to the board once we get, get that part of the process. Um, so that, that shouldn't be an issue. And, and each of the sessions is about one, um, one-hour listening session, and then three two-hour strategic planning committee meetings for the board. Uh, you can run those by your calendar and let me know. Uh, again, those are the ones that M S B A has available for us. Um, we want the board to participate as much as possible. Um, Gail Gilman is the board member, or the M S B A member who's gonna be walking us through this process. Um, and she will allow us to be virtual or in-person during these work sessions as well, so, um, yeah. And, um, it kind of talks about some of the things, community members, uh, businesses, agriculture, cities, county townships, chamber commerce, parents, students, all those types of groups will be represented. Um, and we'll get, we'll get some of those fine tuned once we get some list of names and things like that that we get, start getting put out once we get these, these dates kind of ironed out. So, um, if anyone in the room right now would like to participate in this, just, they can again, email me and we'll get you on the list, and then, and we'll pick from that. Um, but that's essentially the, the outline, I guess, of, of M S B A strategic planning.
Are these special board meetings, or are they...
They'll be board meetings, yeah, they'll be special work session, uh, type of board meetings. Cause, cause the majority of the board should be...
How often does M S B A do this? We don't, we haven't done this in a while.
I don't know when we've done it here, um...
I think we did it first year, and I didn't, and I first just second year.
So 10 years ago? More than 10 years ago?
So again, I think it's a good process, and they, they walk us every step of the way through it. And, um, they get to be impartial, so they can share all the results through that impartiality and, um, you know, take the, the surveys and, and feedback from listening sessions and kind of quantify those.
There is no additional cost for this, for us, right? It's part of our membership at M S B A?
There is a cost, there is a cost for it.
Oh, there is a cost for it? What?
Uh, I don't know, off the top of my head, it's a decent cost though, to the cost for it.
Alright, we should, we should know with that.
I can get the cost, yeah.
And the only thing I'll say is, is that's the start of my summer baseball schedule, and I'm a coach, so to try and find dates, it may, it may be trouble trying to coordinate that, so just giving you the heads up.
Are these dates, I mean...
100% set, no, I mean, I can, I mean, they work for...
Effectively set, right?
Yeah.
These are tentatively set, right?
Yep.
I just asked that, cause I know there will be Tuesdays, your games Tuesday. Would it be better to do it on a Wednesday?
Wednesday would, for me, would be...
You could move your practice.
It'd be one thing if I was missing practice. I can get enough dads to help me with practice, but I've obligated to be a coach, so I don't wanna...
Not be at a game?
Right, right.
I don't know, season's going off.
Right. The season's going bad then already, then maybe I'll...
Uh, alright, yeah, if we, if we...
I can get that cost number to the board.
Well, the cost, and then if, if there's, I think...
Wednesdays?
If there's any of those Wednesdays that are available.
I'll just do, try to see if I can get the next Wednesday of each of these.
Yeah, I, I mean...
At least for a couple of sessions.
Yeah.
Most of my games historically have been any day other than Wednesday. They tried to stay away from, from Wednesdays. But my scheduling is on the 20th, so I will know my game schedule on the 20th of April, so...
Okay.
It, it's a, I won't know much for a couple of weeks yet.
Alright, and you'll just communicate to the chairman?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Alright, any other questions on the strategic planning item? Wouldn't be a motion for any of that at this point, but... Okay, uh, item nine on the, on the agenda is a closed session. The school board will be moving to the district office conference room for these, uh, these two closed sessions. Um, there is a required report, we, we do record those sessions. And there is a required report at the next, uh, school board meeting to summarize both of those sessions. Um, you can imagine the safety and security item probably won't have much to say, uh, but we will all...